Call the meeting to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, my microphone was not on, so if you would, please make sure your button is showing red. All right, very good. Roll call, please.
Alderman Osteen.
Here.
Alderman Marose.
Here.
Alderman Rucker.
Here.
Alderman Schuman.
Here.
Alderman Becker.
Here.
Alderman Ross.
Here.
Mayor Hermanson.
Here. All right. Moving on to Citizens Communications, this is a time set aside on the agenda for citizens and visitors to address the mayor and board on any topic that is not a public hearing. For those here in person, speakers will be restricted to three minutes unless otherwise permitted. Minutes may not be donated or transferred from one speaker to the other. Visitors attending via online will be in listen-only mode. Any questions or comments for the mayor or board may be sent to the city clerk at T-B-E-R-R-E-T-H at OsageBeach.org. No later than 10:00 a.m. on board meeting days, the first and third Thursday of each month. Submitted questions and comments may be read during the Citizens Communications section of the agenda. The Board of Alderman will not take any action on any item not listed on the agenda, nor will it respond to questions, although the staff may be directed to respond at a later time. The mayor and the Board of Alderman welcome to value input and feedback from the public. Is there anyone here in person who would like to address the board? Did you want to address? All right, if you would, please sign in, and you have three minutes, please.
By the time I write my address, it will be.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Stacy Pertle, and I'm with Magic Dragon Trails and the Community Foundation of the Lake, and I just want to say that we really appreciate the city's taking the time and soliciting input for a master plan for the city parks. We've had some good discussions with Gina and Mike about working together, partnering to apply for some grants with you, and building trails. We're looking forward to getting that project going. We think the city park is maybe one of our first catalytic projects to kick off the Magic Dragon Trails, and we had good discussions with your team today about that, and we'd appreciate just continuing to be kept in the loop and working together with that. We think we can help you with some funding, viability possibilities, as well as grant application and grant administration. So we appreciate the city having an open-door policy.
Well, thank you very much. I actually drove out behind YMCA to see the progress there. Are they still needing volunteers?
We are still needing volunteers. We actually, next weekend, all weekend is a volunteer weekend, so if anybody wants to come, yeah, we're having our grand opening on October 9th from 2:00 to 5:00, and free to the public. We're going to be having some bike giveaways, we're going to have helmet checks to make sure, we're going to have some demonstration riders, balloon artists. Mary Mary is going to be there doing face painting, as well as pumpkin painting. We're going to have a food vendor there, we think, so, yes.
Very good.
Thanks for that. We'll get more information out as soon as we get everything finalized.
Sounds great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, if anybody else would like to speak, if you would, please come on up and sign in.
Yeah, I was just going to mention, for anybody wanting to make comments pertaining to the park master plan, we do have a specific section that is set up for the park master plan comments.
Right, okay.
Just wanted to make that comment.
Okay, so, okay, very good. All right, that's fine. We might not have any other comments, and we go right to you, but is there anybody else here that would like to make their comment before we get to our presenter? Come back up, then. Sorry about that. That's first on our agenda, actually, is a public hearing, Osage Beach Master Plan. The city's updating the Osage Beach Master Plan to further guide decision-making and investment for future public...
Oh, wrong one?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Hold on one moment.
Take just one second. Got me all messed up, too. All right, is there a little bit of second? Thank you, Gina.
You're welcome.
If the board so desires, a consent agenda may be approved by a single motion. Minutes of the board are all remaining August 18th, 2022, and the bills list September 1st, 2022. Does the board have any comments, questions on the minutes or the bills list? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, second. Alderman Schuman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're done now. You want to do this for the third time?
Just getting a second.
I'm going to read this again, just to be official. Public hearing, Osage Beach Master Plan. The city is updating the Osage Beach Park Master Plan to further guide decision-making and investment for the future. Public input is needed. A community survey is open until September 9th, 2022, and is accessible via the city's website or Facebook. And if you'd like to introduce yourself, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So my name's Blake Hoditz. I originally grew up here at Lake of the Ozarks, moved away because we unfortunately have a bit of a lack of education and career opportunities, but I've made my way back, and I'm thankful to be back. And recently, I've become, so I'm a developer here at the lake, and I've got a couple of businesses here, and there's a whole parks and recreation opportunity that we do have here at the lake, as we've all seen this evolution of our community kind of go a little bit away from family entertainment and a little bit more focused on adult entertainment. And as somebody who owns a bar here, I do benefit from that, but at the same time, from a community standpoint, where we have the opportunity to expand and to create a destination that's not just a destination, it's actually a location where many people live. And we all love this place, and there's an organization here that has really spearheaded the same initiative that you guys are trying to embrace, and that is the Magic Dragon Trail Systems with Stacy and Jan. I think we're very fortunate to have them in our community, and for somebody in the community to be taking on that level of initiative and willingness to contribute is something I believe we should embrace. And I'm certainly embracing it within my personal development opportunities, and I think Osage Beach has a tremendous opportunity. As a resident who lives, one of the closest residents to that park there that they're building, but next to the YMCA, I'm very excited about what the opportunities it presents. I mean, we've all seen what was happening down at Branson, or not Branson, at Northwest Arkansas, as it's now renowned as the Disneyland of mountain biking. Like, that's quite the title to be able to take home, and the national titles and everything have been there, and the tourism dollars that have gone into that place is absolutely outstanding from just building trails and connected the community. And what we do get the opportunity to with trails and building them all together is it also brings people by different businesses. And so if we had an extended trail network that connects all of the parks together throughout the entire lake region, so I'm certainly looking at it from a much larger, broad spectrum than just Osage Beach, and I know that's what Magic Dragon and the Community Foundation of the Lake is looking at, is we have the opportunity to connect the whole lake area. And we have a unique culture and a unique landscape here, and we have people that are willing to do the hard work. Also, I'm very well, I'm constantly in connection with the council of local governments, and their group is very willing and capable of writing grants for such projects that we can get this government funding to take on these initiatives, and the money's there. It's just a matter of putting our foot forward and all agreeing that, hey, this is what we want to go after, is to create an amenity for our community. And that's what, I'm just here to express my opinion, and that's all it is, is just simply my opinion, but I appreciate you guys' time and attention as just a citizen of Osage Beach, and I hope that we have a community that can endure for a long time and be able to have the amenities that we all want to enjoy and that people seek out as we have that opportunity today, especially as you guys go into this master planning initiative, as those are certainly a fun time. So I hope you guys get creative and embrace the resources that you have available to you with Magic Dragon and with the council of local governments, as they're willing to help and ready to help, and I think we can build a great asset for our community together. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Blake. I do, too. Mike, did you want to come in or provide any other information on the master plan?
Well, unless, if there's any other person that wants to speak about it, but as we're done with, once we get done with this, we do have Darren Barr here, who will talk a little bit about what, where we are so far with the master plan and kind of give the board and the citizens an update.
Very good. All right, thank you.
I'm Adam Vanderpool. I have just recently moved back from Breckenridge, Colorado, and I see how vital a robust trail network has been to that community, and not just for physical activities, but for also mental break from day-to-day life. And I just really believe that it is a vital asset to any community, especially in an area where all the lake recreation we have really does take a lot of money to get on. A good trail network can really benefit people that don't truly have access to that kind of stuff, so I'll keep it short and sweet, but I do agree with everything that Blake has previously said, so, thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
My name's Jan Pertle, and I'm part of the Magic Dragon Trails crew, too. Part of my experience that I enjoyed today in talking with our Parks Director was that I spent several years on the Parks and Recreation Board in my hometown of Choledothe, Missouri, so I know some of the challenges that, everyday challenges that people have to deal with in bathrooms at parks, trashcans and stuff like that. But also see the connectivity of having our parks all connected somehow with trails and trails within them. I don't just want trails in these areas, I want all kinds of fun things for family members to do together. What has really made this a wonderful place for people to have, that has drawn people, isn't just, you know, the wild parties and the crazy, it's having things to do with your kids and your grandkids and bringing them back, even if it's a six- or eight-hour drive to get here. That's what draws people here, but it's also what makes people want to live here. We want to create parks and a whole community feeling where people want to come here and live and raise their families, but also the people who are here, like Blake and Adam, who came back because they want to experience this and stay here. But we have to have things that are really going to draw people to our community and not just, you know, not just the adult entertainment, but we want, if you remember what it's like when you're eight to 10 years old and you're going through the woods and you're finding rocks and sticks to play with, I mean, kids will still do that, given the chance. They might still carry their phones, too, but. And economically, we find that in the 2018 study in Bentonville, Arkansas, the Walton Family Foundation found that they had an annual tax revenue or economic impact of $51 million a year to their economy simply because of trails. And that was four years ago before that even had hundreds more miles of trails built. It increased the property values, it increased the tax revenue, and even when talking about parks amenities, trails do require maintenance, but it doesn't require the maintenance of a field that has to be mowed every week. It has to be trimmed every once in a while, but not mowed every week and lined and fertilized, and you actually don't want to fertilize it because then you have to mow it more. So there's a huge impact that can be felt by having trails along with and inside of our city parks. Hopefully, the state parks would be involved in that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan.
Hi, I'm Janice Gentile, and I am a co-founder of the Community Foundation of the Lake 15 years ago, and through the last 15 years, we've seen a huge growth, a huge volunteer community, and an even huger donation pool. The majority of the money in this community leaves the community because we haven't had a specific project or interest that generates people's specific interests. And by developing the Magic Dragon Trails and other things in this community, we can begin to keep some of that donor money in our community. Branches for the Lake was created to be an administrative arm for the not-for-profits in this community, and Magic Dragon Trails is our priority right now. We were established to be grant administrators, to receive donations, and to help people with their understanding of how their donations can help this community. So we are hoping to work with the community in developing economic development opportunities, which the Magic Dragon will do. In Arkansas, as Jan mentioned, the economic development has been almost overwhelming in terms of coffee shops and bike maintenance shops and different kinds of tourist attractions that the trail generates. There are old barns, there are creeks, there are a variety of things, even vending machines with bicycle parts and t-shirts and other touristy stuff along the trails that give people the opportunity to create an impact on the economic development. Their Parks and Recreation has gone from a few employees to hundreds of employees. The maintenance of some of those have been taken over by local not-for-profits, the community Parks and Recreation, other volunteers in the community, businesses, different varieties of people help maintain the trails so that there is a collaborative effort through several communities in that area, and they are all working toward one goal, and that is to establish the economic development, the job opportunities, and keeping people in their community, asking people to come to their community, and it's been very, very successful. It took about 15 years, so this is not an easy task, but it's one that we are committed to, and we think that you should be as well. It's a wonderful opportunity for our community to create an environment that brings families back to the lake, keeps families at the lake, and brings an enormous amount of tourism to our lake. So I am interested in finding out more about your commitment to the lake area.
Thank you very much. Are you part of the master park plan, too, Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
And, you know, so I don't want to echo everything they already said, because they've made a lot of great comments. Just wanted to expand on what Blake was talking about, the council of local governments participating in some of this process. In Eldon, Missouri, they're already doing it up there, that they're applying for the grants in Eldon for the Rock Island Trail that's in between the city limits that's currently there. So that is, it's moving forward up there. I think it's, you know, it was looked at as a priority here that would help move it along, and it's something that when people come to visit and they have these other amenities, it enhances everything, so not to, you know, kind of continue on the path of what they're talking about, but look at the Katy Trail, you know, so these are other, you know, rails to trails projects that happen, but a trail network system is a very good thing for the community. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Main presentation, we ready for?
Yeah, yeah, so we do have Darren Barr from Bartlett and Ballard King, I'm sorry, I apologize, here to kind of give you guys an update on where we are with the park master plan and provide an opportunity for any of the board members to bounce any questions off of Darren as it pertains to the master plan. So without further ado, I will introduce Darren Barr.
All right, thank you very much. Yeah, if you don't mind, please.
Should have done that already.
Does he get three minutes?
It's fine.
I'm just kidding.
We can do that. Well, thank you all for having me today. It's been fun. It's been a good series of meetings with interested parties and other folks in the community. We are a subconsultant for Cochrane Engineering on the master plan. So far, the work that we've done to date, we've gone ahead and we've done sort of a demographic assessment to talk about where you've been and where you're going. We've used that information to overlay some participation statistics, so we can really have a good idea of what participation might be like in various activities that could take place in your park. When we do that, if we include something that you might not be interested in, that's okay. It's just going ahead and talking about, well, if you're not doing that, the groups are going someplace to find that activity, whether it's tennis or baseball or something along those lines. So with that, we've also gone ahead and we've done an evaluation and been on-site and toured the parks. We're currently doing a survey that's online. I think when we checked, we were at 150-ish responses online. The information has been interesting, because in some cases, you'll go ahead and you'll get a divergence from what you hear online and maybe what you hear in person. It's been, based on what we heard today, which is a small sample, but still a sample, very consistent. As some of you may know, people are pretty emphatic about their pets, so we've heard a lot about dog parks. It's not uncommon, in fact, it's more uncommon than not, to go ahead and have trails play an extremely important part in your master planning process, and you have some great advocates and great partners for that. We're hearing that as well. One of the things that we're hearing that's kind of interesting is the idea that want one of the parks or a part of the parks to have more of a family feel, have more of a family appeal. In some cases, it feels like it's, okay, we've got sports at City Park and we've got sports at Peacock Park, how do we separate the two of them? So we've heard about those types of things, we've heard about restrooms, we've heard about infrastructure. It's been a really good experience to go ahead and sit down and just visit with folks and ask follow-up questions and really have an understanding. The survey's open until the 9th of September. At that point, we'll go ahead and pull that down, and we'll take all the information and start to synthesize that into some recommendations that we'll go ahead and share with your staff and start to tweak those things. Then we can take that information and give it to Cochrane. Cochrane can go ahead and start talking about, you know, what that might look like, what that might feel like, what a timeline for some of those implementation things might be. The other thing that's important to understand is, as they're doing that in concert, we, Ballard King and Associates, is going ahead and looking at the operations of your park, and what does that mean? You run a very lean and mean park system, which is to say, your staff that is dedicated to parks does a lot. So we want to make sure whatever kind of recommendations that we're looking at, whatever kind of implementation timeframe that might be over a five, 10-year period, that you have the staff that's appropriate to go ahead and deal with those facilities that you're going to be implementing, whether you're adding facilities, whether you're retracting facilities. That will become very, very important, just to make sure that the staff that you have in place can go ahead and maintain and upkeep with the things that you might do in the future. Along with that, while we've heard that the community is very interested in those drop-in, what I would call drop-in recreation as an activity, so not necessarily signing up for a league or signing up for a particular activity, they want to be able to go play on the swing sets, drop in basketball, drop in soccer, drop in baseball, those kinds of things, we will take a look at it from the standpoint of a revenue line item as well. So some of that might be direct items, where if Eric and his staff are going ahead and running programs and people are signing up for it, some of it could take the form of shelter rentals, some of it could take the form of facility rentals, and then is there an economic spin-off from that? So that at the end of the day, you'll have an idea of, hey, this is the kind of investment we're talking about in our park system over the next five to 10 years from a physical standpoint, but then you also have the other information that starts to talk about, well, this is what it's going to cost us on an annual operating basis to go ahead and make those things happen. So that's sort of where we're at. I don't have any firm recommendations in my head, but I'm more than happy to answer questions, or if you're curious about how we might approach a certain aspect, I'm more than happy to answer those.
All right. Comments or questions from the board? Alderman Rucker.
Yes, I don't know if you're aware of it, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure anybody on the staff's aware, but I know Gina is, but we had a group of people that are very good at frisbee golf, like a bunch of people that play it, and they have a group that is very good, from what I understand, at being able to put courses together, being able to look at the terrain and give some suggestions. We have such one that was set up for the park, okay? They went down and they did all the surveying work or whatever, and so it's not, I'm not saying it has to be where they put it, but that was done, okay? And I don't know if you are aware of that information, but if not, I'm sure we could get it to you if you don't have it, Eric, but that, and I know there's some desire for that out there, but that's available, just, again, this will give you a footprint of what these people are, and they're still in the area. I mean, the folks that did this, I'm fairly certain we could get some very inexpensive expertise if we go down that line.
Sure.
Which we do have, like I said, there, I know there is some desire for that, but that's something that I wanted to make sure you were aware of.
I can remember having that conversation early on with Mike. In terms of frisbee golf, disc golf, it's a really passionate community, passionate participation base. They are one of the groups that, you know, them along with trails, they're one of the groups that, what kind of sweat equity do we need to put in in order to make something like this happen? I think, speaking very candidly, I think one of the challenges that the city goes ahead and encounters with its park system is how much do we put in one location? You know, you have limited acres, you have limited opportunities to expand just because of the terrain and what's there, so I think you have to be pretty judicious about what you're going to invest in and how you're going to move forward with that. Some of that comes from looking at what's around you, and, you know, is it necessary that everybody, and I'm just picking on disc golf, I don't have a dog in the fight here, but is it necessary that three communities in a row all have a disc golf course? Now, they all might be different skill levels and those types of things, so that may be a direction to go. We run into that when we're talking about whether it's master plans or, you know, we go ahead and we've got a group right now that wants a 50-meter pool, and I'm like grabbing them by the shoulder, saying, no, don't do that, because look around you. They still may make that choice, and that's fine, we just want to know what the impact of that might be, but that's great information to have.
All right, anyone else? The only comment I have, Jan and Stacy, didn't I see frisbee golf listed behind the YMCA? Is that open now?
It is not open, because they're still waiting for some individuals to...
Okay.
Karen Bracken has been, has designed it. They had some youth group out there that helped clear some ground. I think they wanted to put in 18 holes, but that's at the airport, they could only put in nine holes, so that was a bit frustrating for them, so he's actually looking for people to help him lay that out.
Very good.
And that's one of those things where we would definitely like to see, you know, to continue discussion so that we know all of these things. Everybody in the room is sharing the same information. Same thing with the dog park, we're going to talk with Karen about today. A lot of times, that's a business opportunity. I know Blake and Jolene from the thingy, and that's very pet-friendly, and I have a friend in Des Moines that just opened a $10 million, actually a $11 million dog... that just opened a $10 million, actually a $11 million dog park. I mean, it has playground for big dogs, small dogs, vet facility, sporting facility. It is called the Disneyland for dogs, and it's written in USA Today. I mean, it's, our pay in Kansas City is huge. So some of those things that developers can take on, the city doesn't have to step in and put bill for some of those type of things. And that's where we need to have those.
I think that's, you know, a piece of that that I want to go ahead and take away is that when we put this master plan together, we don't go ahead and we don't say, this is what you have to do. We want the master plan to be reflective of the data that we collect at the time. We want it to be reflective of the citizenry at the time. The reality is, is that there's, you're not going to be able to do all of it at the same time. You're not going to be able to do all of it at once. And there's certain things that are going to have to come before one another, but we want to write this in a way that you can pivot as you're going ahead and going through this process and still have options depending upon the direction that you're going. You've got very competent leadership in the Parks and Recreation Department, so that, being able to go ahead and allow them some wiggle room when it comes to that's important.
Very good. Thank you very much. Look forward to it.
Thank you, guys. This has been a fun project.
Very good. All right. Moving on to our last finish, last bit of new business. Bill 22-63, Ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Transportation Alternatives Fund Program Agreement to fund pedestrian improvements for the Highway 42 sidewalk project. This is the first reading. Mike Welty, Assistant City Administrator, if you would, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the board. You may remember back in late June, we did come to the board asking to sign a resolution in support of a TAP grant that we had picked out. We felt very strongly at the time that it was one that would score highly, and we got it. So we're pretty excited about that. This grant will produce a sidewalk that will start at Columbia Avenue, and it will go all the way out to the intersection between the School of Osage High School and Middle School. I have been in contact with the schools and made them aware of it. They're excited about it as well. This grant will be, the cost for this grant will be included in the 2023 budget. The breakdown is as follows. The grant will, is a construction-only project. The total amount of the project is estimated to cost $455,616. The grant is a 75% match, so the split up, which I've kind of, you know what, I'm sorry, I said that wrong. I apologize. Total estimated construction, 607, 488. The grant portion of that would be 455, 616. The city match portion, 151, 872. Apologize for that mistake. But those are the details of the grant. We did, we have received the grant. The one, the one thing I do want to point out in connection with the grant is, we had also previously come to you with an agreement for Cochrane to do the engineering. When I got the grant and I started speaking with MoDOT about the grant, they had made it clear to me that because Cochrane Engineering is our city engineer, they cannot participate in the engineering for that grant. So we are going to have to void the contract for the engineering through Cochrane for this. And we have in our possession the list of approved engineers through MoDOT, and we are currently picking out an engineer on that list that we're going to be bringing a new engineering agreement forward to the board to move forward with that. But I can't start that process until I get the grant agreement approved. So the grant agreement is what you have before you today. The total out-of-pocket for the city, and this is also based upon the engineering information that we did get from Cochrane, so this could change just a little bit. But the 25% construction match and the 100% engineering services would be around 242,000 total out-of-pocket for the city. And as I said before, this will be part of the budget that we bring to the budget workshops and bring for your approval at the end of the year. So really excited about it. This is the first time I've personally been involved with one of these TAP grants, and this is a sidewalk that is going to go right by Peacock Park. It's kind of appropriate that we have this on the day that we're doing all this park master planning, because this is going to provide an avenue to bring more people to our park, as long with providing that avenue for kids to get to school from a standpoint of walking as well. So pretty exciting. I do recommend approval.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Welty, any comments or questions from the board? Alderman Ross?
Yes, just to clarify, so the cost the city would be incurring, you said 242,000?
242,000, as far as what I know right now, but because...
Of what other, and engineering would be more?
There could be a change in some of the engineering costs, and all that stuff will be ironed out before the budget workshops, and we'll be bringing that to your attention at that time. What you have before you right now is simply a, the grant agreement for the construction costs only, that needs a first and second reading. It'll be this meeting and the next, so that we can move forward with the next phases of preparing for this project.
Okay. I have another question. Who and what determine the location? I mean, it's a highway, State Highway 42, as far as people walking. And I'm thinking of Columbia Drive to the school, and I think it's wonderful, they could walk past the park, but who would be walking? I mean, the volume of the population going back and forth and for us to spend that money, I just, I'm questioning that.
I will add a little bit to that. We, although you guys have not approved the sidewalk master plan, we, the first few years, this was one of them. Two different factors come into play in choosing that sidewalk. One was the volume of walking. Now, I do not have numbers on top of my head, but the area from Mace to the Parkway, behind the college to the school, and even further on toward Kaiser, is one of our higher density of families. Plus, you have the schools, not only the college, but you have the grocery store and the shopping. So between the end of our city past the school, which is a little bit in Kaiser, the apartments and housing that is immediately up on our city limits, and the density of population behind Hy-Vee on D Road, and the density of population, full-time families down Mace, that is, besides down Passover, that's our highest density of full-time families living with children. At one time, Mace Road had, how many buses stopped? A couple buses stopped. So when we talk about the walking, the people that live here and walk between parks and schools and shopping, that is one of our highest density. Plus, the TAP grant does score higher on these particular types of projects. So that, those factors with some others is really what drove that decision of that particular sidewalk.
Okay, I understand the density of the population, but we're talking about the intersection of 42 and Columbia Drive, and the neighborhoods are way up there. I mean, are we going to be looking at putting a sidewalk all the way up Columbia Drive?
Well, I mean, there, we have bits and pieces. That's how we got the sidewalk. We still have gaps between around the Walgreens area, but these last three sets of grants, sidewalk grant, or sidewalk projects, two of which are closing some gaps. So we're slowly with time matching Mace Road to the Hy-Vee, back behind Columbia Avenue. So we do have some gaps that, yes, these are still phases to get it all connected. The School of the Osage down at the school entrance, they've already got the crosswalk. It does get kids to Peacock, and then that intersection of the avenue, Columbia Avenue, I don't believe, it stops there because we don't have the Walgreens at the busy intersection pedestrian-ready. So really, that's why it needed to stop at Columbia. But then walkers on Columbia Avenue going back behind that busy intersection, or busy section.
I mean, we talked about a sidewalk some time ago from Mace Road.
And we slowly built those gaps, if you can remember. We, now we can, they can almost walk on all sidewalks. We've got a bridge issue, but that's to come.
Okay. I just, I just wondered where the priority was.
When we first looked at this project, Gina and I said, let's do both. Let's do, you know, Columbia and at the 42. The problem is, is that the grant has a maximum. You can only spend $500,000. You can only get $500,000 in this TAP grant. And so it just didn't make any sense for us to include both in one year. But in essence, when we do another TAP grant request, that's likely, the most likely one is to add that connecting piece on Columbia.
Okay.
Any other comments? Alderman Ross?
So I have a couple of questions, and I'm going to tag on to what Phyllis was talking about. First of all, Gina, you're right, this was the third highest project, or at least some portion of Columbia Avenue, on the sidewalk master plan that we talked, we didn't maybe formally approve it, but it's the best we've got at this point. But I realize it scored high because of the school, and it's connected to the school. That's some of the high priority that MoDOT puts on that. So as we, if we were to go forward with this, and then, and for lack of a better term, connect to the school from some point, connecting D, which is where the closest sidewalk is, I think, back over to...
Back on that side, yes.
Right. Well, that can, that, how will that score, given the fact that we're connecting to something that already goes to a school? Will it score?
Connecting, connecting the two end pieces will help too. We have a gap.
So the school part will still be considered. We're not done with that school, or points that are awarded, because it does tie back to a school. Okay. So this is just a way in my mind to get that thing from...
Circle.
Right. It'll end up being from the Parkway all the way to the Osage High School, is what. And from D Road right now, all the way to the Parkway, we have a sidewalk, right?
To Parkway to, down on Berry, which is what we call D, but Berry. And then we have down past Dumont Plaza, and then we kind of gap between Mace, and then we've...
Right, right. But we will have connected the Parkway to the school if we were to get the second grant that you talked about.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. It costs more than I think, and I know that, you know, there may not be a lot of people walking there now, but I think part of the reason is because it's not very easy to walk there right now, to tell you the truth. It's really hard to walk there, especially when you go up there by Eagle Lanes and so forth. There's hardly any room. So...
And, you know, the kind of, kind of the philosophy that we took was, we're not going to get a TAP grant for every piece.
Right.
But this one, we knew was going to score the highest. So, you know, get the TAP grants for the ones that you know you can get, and then, you know, the city can either apply for more TAP grant money, and if we get it, great. But at least we've, we've used TAP grant money for one of the major pieces. And then whether we do it with city funds or grant funds in the future, you know, at least we've gotten it started and we have used the grant money that we can in the area with the most need.
Well, given the topography, I think going from Columbia back to Berry Pruitt, or D Road, or whatever you want to talk about, that should be a fairly, it should be an easier...
Topographically better.
Right, that's what I thought. All right, thanks. That's all I have.
Alderman Osteen?
I don't have a question more than just a comment. I'm not sure if anybody else is alarmed by the cost of this project. Basically, with the construction costs and engineering services, this project's coming in at $1,893 per foot. Now, call me crazy, I don't know a lot about concrete work, but that seems exorbitantly high compared to other sidewalk projects. I just want to throw that out there.
I don't have the details either, but Bob, we will get those to you. I know Mike had to go through approval process through MoDOT just to get that, but we'll be happy to share that with you. I know when we get to the construction contracts and that stuff, a lot of that will be flushed out as to, or at least, what did we apply for and why, and where those costs come from. So we'll get that to you ahead of time, but that will definitely be a deeper dive too when we, you know, this, to get it.
I understand. I just wanted to throw that out there that the cost seems exorbitant for how many feet of sidewalk we're putting in. Once again, that's just my opinion.
There's some hills there, but again, I also don't have it in front of me, and I'm not a engineer, but they, we'll get that to you, but I know there'll be more flushed-out details. This was to get the grant, at least get started.
Alderman Becker?
Yep. Alderman Osteen, excuse me, I agree, except what jumped out at me was, sorry to offend Cochrane, but $100,000 just to engineer the darn thing. That's kind of what blows me away. I'm for the project, but I think that's extremely high.
Well, and as Mike said, that'll be flushed out too, because that was their estimate, which could have been a percentage of a project, or percentage of the cost. And then we go through MoDOT for their approved, and they will re-engineer it. So I...
The one thing I will point out, though, Alderman Becker, is the $100,000 includes both the engineering services and the construction inspection services. So that's not just all for the, for the design of it. That is for the design and the construction administration during the project.
Potato, potato.
So reality is, that's project management services too, is what I think I'm hearing. Is that right? So they're going to manage the contract, whoever this is, are they managing the contract, or is it just inspection?
It's just inspection.
Okay. At 15%, it's like 14 to 15%. And I thought I was always told that engineering was somewhere around seven to nine. And so if, if in fact, inspection services as much as engineering, then that seems odd, or engineering services has gone up quite a bit as a percentage of project costs. But it's been a while since I've been through that.
So I did not prepare this particular estimate, but I typically, at this stage, so obviously a detailed design has not been done at this point. So this estimate is just based off kind of driving the alignment, looking to see what, what features are going to be encountered. Typically, at this stage, we prepare a construction cost estimate. The engineering is about 10% of construction cost, and the construction services are roughly about 60% of the design fee. That's just kind of an order of magnitude.
Or 15%.
At this stage. That is, that is not a proposal that was, at this point, you're going to, as Mike said, you're going to solicit proposals from other engineers to have this work done. So at that point, you'll know what your actual engineering fees are.
Okay.
Thank you, Dave. I looked right over Kevin. I didn't know why we didn't just start with you.
All right. Any other comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve first reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, do I have a second? Alderman Becker, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. First reading carries. And that's it for business. I think we're going to move on to staff communications. Assistant City, excuse me, City Administrator Gina Woods.
Yes. I want to tag on to the grant conversation. I first want to thank Mike, because I know he doesn't give himself enough credit. This is his first TAP grant. He's been involved with the TAP grants on the tail inside, but this is the first one from the beginning to end. And actually, the grant he wrote last year, we actually found out too late, we actually got it, and we'd already started the project, so we couldn't go back, which, you know, we're getting a sidewalk, it was good. And that grant funds, it's not that we lost it, but I will say a thank you to Special Road District, because that's where we supplemented at the time. So he actually had another successful one. But I am pretty sure Mike has been involved with eight or nine grant applications in some point this year between ARPA, Water and Sewer, some other ones that we've got coming down the pipe. But I segue that into, I know this is a 2023, a request that will impact a 2023 budget that we have yet to put in front of us and decide as a whole. And that is against normally all my rules for budgeting. But because these grants are so timely, and we have lots of opportunities to expand water, sewer, sidewalks, potentially trails, you're most likely going to see a couple more applications come in front of you. That's probably a little bit prior to budget workshop, because I don't like piecemealing commitments before you all have time to, to address the whole budget as a whole. So I'm not, we're not trying to sneak in funds before we get to decide, but I also know it's a priority with ARPA funds and the timing. The Magic Dragon, we're working with them on also applying for a grant for the, for inside the park, so you're going to see that prior to the budget as well. I'm crunching numbers pre-budget to give you an idea, because I certainly don't want to put anything in front of you that we come to budget and then say, oh, sorry, we don't have any money. So more to come on that, but I just wanted you to know. I normally don't like to get the car before the horse and ask Mike. It's usually a no. But this has been a unique year, because we have a lot of grant opportunities, a lot of money out there to get, and it doesn't always coincide with our budget workshop. So keep that in mind when you see a couple other ones coming ahead of you before October. On that, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much. Assistant City Administrator, Mike Welty?
Thank you, sir. I do want to thank the board. I had the opportunity to go to the Four States Airport Conference this past Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. It was my first time attending the conference. This is a conference that Ty attends pretty much every year. But as the administrator over the airport, and with a lot of the opportunities that we may have coming with changes to our airports, Gina and I felt like it was a good year for me to go. I learned a lot. It was, you know, I also do all the grants for, for the airport as well, which, that one, I'm kind of a veteran on. I've been doing it for years. And there was a lot of questions I always had about why you have to do X, Y, or Z along with the grant process. And to be able to go to the conference and sit through some of these classes and learn the details behind...
the details behind some of the processes that I've kind of got to know like the back of my hand, has, has been a really good educational piece for me. It's given me a lot more insight into what other grant opportunities from an airport standpoint might be out there and available to us, and some of the do's and don'ts when you do the grants and, and how you do the grants. So it was very educational and, and certainly a worthwhile trip. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. City Clerk Tara Barrett.
Oh, I do have something. We are, have MML coming up in a couple weeks, next weekend, here at, at our City Hall or here in the courtroom, where I'm hosting the Athenian Dialogue for Region Seven on Saturday, and then Masters Academy in here on Sunday. Next week, I'm going to be out, I'm also on the Silent Auction Committee, so I'm going to be going around to some of the businesses. We are putting together a silent auction that, well, since everybody gets to go, you'll be able to stop by our booths. We have it, all the money that's donated to buy the auctions, go to help clerks that cannot afford to go to conferences, that money goes into our education fund. So I'll be coming out around to some of the businesses. If anybody has anything they'd like to donate and put on our auction site, I'll be coming to see you and getting baskets, and I've talked to a couple of them. So if anybody has anything they want to donate, just come see me and let me know. But MML starts on Sunday, the 11th, and it goes till Tuesday night, and we'll see everybody there. That's it. That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. City Attorney Ed Rucker.
I wouldn't even attempt to follow that. I got nothing.
Officer O'Dave?
I have nothing.
City Planner Carrie Patterson?
Yes, Mayor. So we're coming into the time of year when most of our developers start to put a little lead in the, in the gas pedal and, and get ready to start building next spring. So we are busy. We are headlong into the reviews of the two major residential developments that we have reviewed over the past year, the apartments on Nichols Road and then Harper's Cove, which is, is back behind us here across from Cayman Beach. So we are involved in the process of looking at their engineering, and, and once we get to a point where we are ready, we'll go ahead and begin those in the process to where they will start with the planning commission, and then the Board of Aldermen will see those preliminary plaits, public improvement plans, and we'll be ready to start doing some building permits and, and turning some shovels on those. So we're excited for that. And since we're talking about parks, we had the, a little bit of a parks night tonight as opposed to talking about the future, I'll talk a little bit about the past and the present. I've been here long enough to where I was actually at the groundbreaking for the part, the new park, and was also got to oversee the, the inspection for our first grant money that we got, which included the big rock that has the sign out by the gate, our first parking lot, and the original dock that was floating on the pond, which we all had, we had ready and got our first, got our first grant money for that. But what I want to talk about now is, is, you know, I am a dad, and my daughter is one heck of a softball player. And because of that, I get to travel to St. Louis and Kansas City and Branson a lot in the spring and the fall. But I am happy to say that we have a park now that the Midwest, or Mid-Missouri Freedom, which is the team my daughter plays for, will be having their first tournament at our park on October 22nd. And they're still working on bringing in teams for the 14U tournament, but they are the sponsors. And started working with Eric a few weeks ago, and he's been great to work with, and Mike has been great to work with. So excited to get to stay home for a weekend and watch a little softball instead of our team taking all that money to another community. So it's, you know, while we look at the future for our parks, it's also great to know that we have such a great park and, and great group out there now. And it's good to be able to, to stay home, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you much. Public Works Director Kevin Crooks.
Thank you, Mayor. Would just like to speak briefly on our sewer collection system as it relates to inflow and infiltration, or INI as it's known. Just a brief explanation for what INI is, if you're unaware. Inflow would be rainwater that enters a sewer collection system through manhole covers, grinder stations that are too low to grade, things like that. Infiltration would be rainwater entering the system from cracked sewer laterals, failed pipe joints. So basically, inflow is above grade, and infiltration would be below grade. To the point, last month in August, we had three rain events. August 4th, we had one inch. August 9th, we had 2.6. And then August 16th and 17th, I cobbled those two rain events together. They totaled 2.7 inches. This led to peak INI events occurring where the collection system surcharged, resulting in system-wide hydraulic backup. This means that basically the pressure mains that convey our wastewater to the joint treatment plant were unable to take the volume of flow for a period of time on August 17th, about four hours. Those were some long hours, even though there were only four. At that time, we had stations that with no mechanical issues, they had electricity, they had operating pumps that were going high level all across town. Again, that we could not force any more flow into our force mains. This occurred on not only two horsepower grinder stations, but in our largest lift station, Sands, which has four 200 horsepower motors. Sands was spinning but couldn't move the flow. It went high level, but thank goodness Sands has a, has a, an overflow basin there, and that operated as designed. When Sands went high level, it spilled over into the basin and was stored there. That's, that's, that's good thinking, that's forward thinking, and it operated as it should have instead of going into the lake. So moving on, Gary Hutchcraft, the joint plant manager, had anticipated this event. He watches the weather more than a farmer, and he made operational changes at the plant to accommodate these coming excessive flows. On an average day in Osage Beach, we would convey about 1.2 million gallons a day to the joint treatment plant. On again, the same evening, day, August 17th, we sent over 2.661 million gallons of, of wastewater to the plant. This was over twice our normal use because of INI. And not to beat ourselves up too much because Lake Ozark didn't fare much better, however, their numbers doubled, kind of mirroring our own, however, because they're a smaller community, their total flows were smaller by total volume. In conclusion, just to say that INI is a, clearly an issue here, as it is with many other, you know, wastewater collection systems, and reducing this INI will take a concerted effort, and one we have just begun to turn our attention to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Parks Director Eric Gregory.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that as part of this master plan process, it was open for a public comment here at City Hall this afternoon, and I joined Darren here all afternoon, and we were able to meet with members of the public. I was able to meet Stacy and Jan with Magic Dragon, and they had a lot of exciting ideas, very good master plan, as we discussed, for the trail system. Thank you for Alderman Morose for stopping by and talking with us as well. Appreciate that. And can't emphasize enough, please, 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 take the time, a few minutes, and fill out the master plan survey. Can still be submitted until September 9th, which is on the citywide website or the Parks and Rec Facebook page. We really, really want the public's input at your parks. We want to know what you want in your parks, so. Also, one reminder, there's still time to register for the citywide rummage sale, which will be on September 17th. The information sheet signup form is on the city website. We still have spaces left at City Hall, or you can register your residents to be included on a map, which the city provides. And also, we're still accepting applications for vendors for the Fall Festival on October 8th, which will be bigger and better than it has been in the past. We're excited about it. Will include live music, vendor booths, a piting contest, I think, I think somebody on the board is, is participating in that. We're excited about that.
Sugar-free pie.
Sugar-free pie.
Yes.
Taken care of. Heading zoo, bounce houses, food, games. New this year, we got confirmation from the Missouri National Guard that they're going to have a static display Black Hawk helicopter landing on Field Three. We also have the World Bird Sanctuary Raptor Awareness Program. They're going to be joining us. It's, it's an outstanding program. I, I hosted it for 10 years in a row in the parks I managed before, and very, very popular. And again, that's coming up, so if you're interested in being a vendor, please reach out to us, and we can help you with that. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Cochran Engineering, Dave Van Leer, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to stick with the, the Parks Master Plan, so Darren kind of alluded to it, but what I see happening over the next couple of months is Darren with Ballard King finishing the, the assessment and needs assessment for the city. And then from there, what we're going to do is we'll take that information, work with, work with staff to come up with what improvements we want to recommend to the parks, and then we will put together site plans or drawings of your existing parks showing the improvements that will be added, and how they fit, and where they'll go. And then in addition to that, we'll have cost estimates for those improvements and a, a recommended schedule for completing those projects. So that's what, that's what you'll be seeing happening with the Parks Master Plan over the next couple of months.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Alderman Rucker?
Yes, and bear with me, I have a number of items, a number of different items. First of all, I want to start off with in reference to the TIF. Our meeting we had last night was very good and very, very informative, but I would like to ask Gina if, if she could add to the things for us to look into is clawbacks. That was something that was mentioned by one of our, our developers that they didn't like the clawbacks clauses. And so I think, at least from my standpoint, for me to respond back to that, I need to be educated. I need to find out, you know, what the financing people do as far as looking at it. It was mentioned that they look at it from a negative, so I would just like to see if we could put that on our agenda of other TIF things that we're going to be doing to get us educated. The other thing is, is in reference to this, and I should have mentioned this last night, but I didn't because I just failed to, I forgot it. But many, many, many years ago, I was in a, a conference through MML, and they made a statement about TIFs, and it stuck with me. And again, I, I wish I had repeated it last night. TIF is a privilege, not a right. And I think that's something our developers need to be sure of. It's a privilege to get a TIF, not a right to get a TIF. So at least that's my opinion as well. Another subject, land clearing situations. I would like to educate the board just a little bit, and I'm sure the staff is pretty well aware of it, but, but right now, in Phyllis and Tyler's area, you have some land clearing going on. And I visited with the Fire Marshal who was, I'd seen at an event, well, actually, I seen him at church, and we were chatting, and he was telling me about some issues that they were having over there at this land clearing opportunity that's going on, and, and everything is okay. But let me back up and give you a little bit of knowledge, so when your citizens call you and talk to you about it, you know what's going on. When, when somebody, a developer comes in and has all these pretty trees and stuff, unfortunately, you know what? In this day and age, they just bulldoze them all down rather than trying to keep them. But anyway, as they clear all that land away, there is a method that is used in today's technology to dispose of those trees and brush, et cetera. In the good old, olden days, we just piled them all in a big old pile, threw a can of diesel fuel on it, lit it off, and let it go. Well, that's, that's not the way we do it nowadays. We, they, what is done, and this is a, a method that has been approved by the state of Missouri, by the State Fire Marshal's Office, by the Fire Service, by environmentalists, is called an air curtain destructor. And what is done is the, 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 the property is cleared off, cleared all off, there's a hole that is dug in the ground, usually six to, to 12 foot deep, just depending on what they're going to do. And they put the trees and the, and the material in there that are going to burn to a certain extent, and they do use a petroleum-based product to get it going. I mean, that's, that's the only bad thing. But then once they get it going, I'm sure we all have had this game we've played where you take fire and you blow a fan on it, you see it just really poof up. Well, that's exactly what goes on. There's this device that blows air down into this pit and blows it down in there at a rapid rate to get the fu-, to get it burning, because again, my Fire Service background, smoke is un-burnt particles. So by forcing air in there and forcing a lot of it in there, it burns it faster, it burns it hotter, and it burns it to the point where there's little smoke. Now, you're not going to eliminate all the smoke, because when you get green stuff, it's very hard. And that's where some of the complaints come, where people will complain. Also, when it starts up in the morning, you get a little bit more smoke, and as you, as it dies down in the evening. So that, a device over there that we have is approved. It's approved not only by the Osage Beach Fire District, but it's approved by the State Fire Marshal's Office. I'm not 100% sure what process we play in it at the city level, but I know that if anything, we're notified. We may not have any approval process, but we at least have a notification process. But when you, when your citizens call you and complain about it, that's the process that we have in our area here. And, and that's what's going on in, in your guys' ward, so there has, I know there was some, some complaints and stuff over there from citizens, not necessarily to us, we may have gotten some of them, but the Fire District. So that's just a little bit of educational session there for you. Newspaper. I would first like to, and I, and again, probably should have done it last night, but I didn't, I would first like to reach out and say to Dan Fields, thank you. Dan has had an article that he produced in the, in the paper, August 24th paper, "City Developers Still at Odds Over TIF." Okay, yeah, well, there's some stuff there. But the article was very well put together. It showed, it gave what the developer's side was, and it gave the city's side of information. And there was a lot of, of, of stuff there, and it wasn't like previous articles that have been posted by Ms. Nancy Zoller, which I'm not pleased with her articles at all.
I've left a message, I've left a message for her to call me back. Two days ago, I have yet to hear anything back, just for the record.
I spoke with her kind of briefly about some comments about that.
Yes. Yes, I'm, I've, I've, I'm not been pleased with, with her articles. I realize that, you know, there's, there's every, there's two sides to every story, but the problem is her articles only have one side. And, and so, but I do want to reach out to Dan, because I'll be very honest, after her article was in the paper, I called Dan. I know Dan. I've known Dan for years. I've known Dan for years as a fire chief, and it's Dan being a reporter. And I said, Dan, help, we need all the information put there. And Dan put in more information there. Now, for, for the public, just so you're aware, we, the city, cannot expose everybody, or we, I guess we could, but we don't expose everybody's laundry, dirty laundry. The developer didn't have a problem exposing what they felt was our dirty laundry. So, and I know the mayor will be addressing this issue a little bit more in, in his point, but I just wanted to bring up the fact of, thanks to Dan and, and, because the article he has here is much better of giving all the information. And lastly, but not least, as we look at the paper, I will be sharing with my fellow Aldermen and Gina as well, an article that was in the August 26th Friday paper. It's called "Large Donations for Bike Week." And in case you haven't read this, I will give this to you. Basically, it's, it's a pretty good, healthy chunk of money that the Lake Ozark city is getting from the Indian bike people.
Yeah.
And my concern or question is, we have contributed money to the Bike Fest. Part of that, I was assuming, went with presenting the Bike Fest, which included the whole Bike Fest. And so now we've got a corporate sponsor that's coming up with 20 some thousand dollars, and so I question, I, I, I question the need for that organization, they had to need funds. Now, we've already contributed to this year, and, and that's fine, but as we look forward, as you can read this article, as we look forward to it, I will be questioning it a lot more. And I just wanted to share this information that I've been able to get with my fellow board members. Thank you, that's all I have.
All right, some good points. Thank you very much. Alderman Schuman? All right. Some good points. Thank you very much. Alderman Schuman.
I don't have as much. No, mainly just Labor Day weekend's coming up. Everybody have a safe, fun weekend. Watch out for all, we all know the traffic gets a lot more around here. We've already seen some of the people influxing in, which is really good for our dollars. But everybody just keep your eyes open for that and that's about it. Just have a safe and happy Labor Day weekend.
Thank you. Alderman Becker.
Yes, I have a couple of things. Kevin, could you give a brief update on the Bellwood Estates sewer issue we have going on?
That's all.
Mary?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, um, Bellwood or Bellwood Estates. The, the point of contention or the issue, if you will, there concerns a, a gravity main, a gravity sewer main that is in Pheasant Place, that is in a Bellwoods estate, HOA purview. I guess to boil it down, the main, the main point of contention is that, is the ownership of that gravity main. Takes a little bit of history here, but when the sewer system came through in the eighties, at that time, there was a small package wastewater treatment plant taking care of the wastewater in that HOA that was abandoned. Of course, we brought our sewer system in, which is a pressure system. The cans were laid. The easements were gotten for those cans, for those grinder stations. Easements were gotten from the HOA for the pressure mains that are coming out of there. But the, the main contention, and, and just this week, the mayor, Mike Wealthy and myself, talked to representatives from the HOA and heard them out. And essentially, it's their contention that they believe also that a gravity main should or could or was also given over to, to the city when that pressure system was put in. We're, we're still in the discovery phase. I literally didn't have no language or, and we've never inspected it because it was our assertion of our assumption that it was private. We have, just this week, our GIS tech has put it in GIS. We kind of know where it is now. It was kind of a rumor before that. And we did a cursory inspection of the conditions of that, of those manholes in that main. As near as we can tell that, again, I don't know what happened 25, 30 years ago, but it seems to me that it was not taken over because it didn't meet standards. And all that is, uh, still needs to be ascertained, but we're still in the discovery phase. We're going to keep communications open to HOA. I think I know a scouring documents as far back as we can find. We do have the easements that were granted. I would just add that an easement for that gravity main was not obtained by the city that we can find. So, we'll continue looking. It's a, it's an issue with progress.
Thank you. Just, just wanted everybody to be aware that that could be a issue of contention down the road. They, they think we own it and take care of it. We think that they own it and take care of it. So, if there's, happens to be an issue, they have certain expectations that we do not have. So, just wanted everybody to be aware of that. Secondly, last night at our special board meeting, Mr. Foster mentioned he had obtained a 353 project through Eldon without an ordinance. I guess I was under the understanding an ordinance was required to do that. And so, I would like staff, whoever, to maybe verify that.
It's already on my list. I just didn't make it very far on that today.
Okay.
But it, it was on my list last night for, just to figure out. And there's a chance that the city did what they needed to do per ordinance outside or around.
Correct. Correct. I, I just want to make sure that if there is a way to involve a less bureaucracy, I'm all for it. And I'm sure the developers would be happy about that, too. And lastly, just everybody have a happy, safe Labor Day weekend.
Thank you very much. Alderman Osteen.
I have nothing this evening.
What? Alderman Rose.
I'm stunned. Well, first of all, I'd just like to thank Jan and Stacy for coming again and, and talking about the Magic Dragon Trail. And it's very exciting for our area and, and I'm, I know it's going to even progress even further as time goes on. And hope whatever the city can do to support it, that we will do it. And also, I enjoyed being, what little time I did spend at the, at the conference today with the, with the major park planning development. And I thought it was interesting of all the input that was submitted. And personally, I just think our parks are lacking, and that's what I was excited about hearing, that to entice more of the families to feel that they can go to our park with the children and spend a few hours there. And besides just playing on a little playground, merry ground or whatever, but a place to use a stroller and walk around. Just, just to have a place like you think of when you go to a park. You know, benches to sit on and then watch the kids play and, rather than just seeing them running around in a field. But anyway, and I know things will come to fruition. It's just a matter of time, matter of planning, matter of money, obviously. But I know we are, we are looking forward to doing something more than what we already have. And I, and I know that you're all into that, too. Happy Labor Day weekend. Be safe and I would say look out not only for the drivers on the highway, but if you're out boating, be careful as well. Okay, that's it.
Thank you very much. Alderman Ross.
Two things, thank you. First of all, I want to recognize the Police Department. We had some issues over the last few weeks down on Wilson. And I know there's been some efforts to, we, it's with speeding. I mean, it's a long, straight road that it's very easy for people to, you know, collect a lot of speed. And, and I just want to thank you all. I know there's some more work that probably needs to be done. We've made some impact. We may need to make some more. But thank for all your efforts down there. I appreciate that. And then the next thing is, is that the Magic Dragon Trails, there's one way to probably support the trails. September 14th, the Wing Fest, and while I won't speak for Central Bank, they tend to give half the proceeds to the community foundation. So, we'll hope for some great weather. We're making some plans to hopefully be out around the pool. But September 14th, that's a way to support the Magic Dragon Trails also. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Excuse me. And I'm not going to repeat last night. I appreciate what you were talking about, Alderman Rucker. But if you're curious to know about some of my frustrations, go to last night's board meeting on our Facebook page. I'm not going to go down that path. We're going to keep it positive from here on out. Just I want people to know that the development of them all will happen. We want it to be developed and we have a lot of other developers that are knocking our door, on our door and on that door. With that being said, I'm on a personal level, I was pulling it up here. I wasn't texting. But I just wanted to tell you that Tuesday on the 30th, I'm proud to announce my first grand baby. Elaine Leanne Harmison, seven pounds and even 18.5 length. And my son, in his words, says, "She's a keeper."
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. And speaking of birthdays, my understanding is we have a birthday in the house. Am I correct, Ron? Ron Schmidt, 85th birthday, I'm told. So, happy birthday, Ron. Also, Kevin Crooks, I just wanted to point out the, the Public Works, so Labor Day weekend coming up. The, the staff has been out diligently cleaning up and mowing and weed eating. And we got thousands of people coming here, so we appreciate them making the city look pretty. So, thank, thank you very much for that, too. Couple of things. I was just looking at my calendar. I don't have anything else written down, but there's a lot of stuff that's going to happen between now and next Alderman meeting. So, I just wanted to point out a few things. The, the Vietnam Wall is going to be at Kohl's on the 7th of September. If you've not seen that, go out and check that out. It's just beautiful. And then the next day, I believe, starting at 10:00 AM, there's going to be a parade route from Kohl's down to the airport, going down through Camden Town. And then it'll be, the Vietnam Wall will be at, for the Lake of the Ozarks Air Show. So, the beautiful thing, that's on the 10th of September, which happens to be at my birthday as well, if anybody wants to send gifts. And then on the 11th, they do have the, the mile walk for the Veterans Walk. Again, great thing. They basically sign up for a veteran and you can walk in, in their honor. Then the MML conference and all that sort of stuff. So, a lot of things going on. That's really all I have. Have a great Labor Day weekend. I guess I will say for my birthday weekend, if you remember Grove Ark and Grove, Oklahoma folks, we're here at Grand Lakes. And for my weekend, they came up to tour our city hall because they, in their words, are about 20 years behind us. And the tourism area where, so we're going to go down there. I'm touring their city hall on, on September the 9th. And they're going to kind of show me around town. So, I think it's nice to have partnership with other communities similar to ours. So, yes, sir.
For what it's worth, Mayor, I'm not sure if you're aware or not, but we made the paper in Grove, Oklahoma.
I did see that, yes.
My wife found it and pointed it out to me.
Yes, our picture, right? That's awesome. All right, folks. So, with that being said, notice is now given that the agenda includes a roll call vote to close the meeting as allowed RSMO Section 610.02021. Leasing, purchasing, or sale of real estate by the public governmental body where public knowledge of a transaction might adversely affect the legal consideration. So, with that, do I have a motion to, a roll call, motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Alderman Ross, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Rose. Roll call, please.
Alderman Rucker.
Yes.
Alderman Schuman.
Yes.
Alderman Osteen.
Yes.
Alderman Marose.
Yes.
Alderman Becker.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, folks.